Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco meeting here. Sorry about that, it took me a second. Um, trying to get my iPad here working. Sorry about that. So, we are the City Council Regular Meeting. It is now seven o'clock and August 18th, and welcome to the meeting. So, we have like to know that individuals who would like to provide public comments remotely may continue to do so by filling out the online form with the city's website at www.pascowat.gov-publiccomment. To pay them access information to comment, requests or comment in meetings must be received by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. And I am with that. Um, let's get a call to order.
Councilmember Barajas?
President.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
President.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Grimm?
I am here.
Councilmember Harpster?
Present.
Councilmember Peralis?
Here.
Mayor Protem Milne?
I am here.
All is accounted for, sir.
Alright. Well, thank you for that. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we are going to move on to item number four, which is the Oath of Office. And we're going to have our new city manager, and it's going to be administered by the city clerk. And, uh, Mr. Ferguson.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mayor Protem. So, just to clarify, I did send out an email kind of last minute. So, uh, one of the things that we did, and we did approve, uh, the agreement for, uh, Mr. Stewart, we, uh, did not actually also approve, uh, or, uh, have the council approve for an appointment because we thought we were going to have a bit of a lag between those two. So, at this time, uh, just to make sure we have a belt and suspenders, uh, it would make me, uh, sleep a lot better at night if somebody would make a motion and then second it to approve, uh, Mr. Stewart to be appointed as the city manager. Before the, before he takes the oath.
Yeah, make a motion that we appoint Mr. Harold Stewart to the position of city manager for the city of Pasco.
Second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Harpster, a second by Mr. Councilman Peralis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes you now, so we thank you.
Well, welcome. I'd like you to repeat after me. Raise your hand, right hand first, okay. I state your name.
I, Harold Stewart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
And all the pub, and all the local ordinances.
And all the local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office of city manager.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office of city manager.
For the city of Pasco.
For the city of Pasco.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, thank you for that. We are excited to have you. Um, thank you for coming early. And again, we're, Pasco's very fortunate. And again, we look for all the great things you're going to do to lead our city and, uh, move us forward. Well, with that, let's move on to number five, which is the election of mayor and possible election of a mayor pro tem. So with that, the election of mayor is needed since the position was vacated recently by Mr. Serrano. The term of mayor will start tonight and conclude on December 31st, 2025. Pasco operates under the council-manager form of government. The duties of mayor position include: The mayor is the leader of council and city figurehead. The mayor presides over the council meetings. The mayor determines the council member assignments to boards and commissions for the two-year period. The mayor appoints members to the city's various volunteer boards, commissions, and committees with council approval. The mayor also issues proclamations, attends ribbon cuttings, and attends other key community events presiding, representing the city and city council. Four, the duties of mayor pro tem are performed, the mayor's duties, when the mayor is unavailable. And lastly, only the city council may elect the mayor and mayor pro tem positions. With that, do we have, uh, anybody like to nominate?
I nominate David Milne.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Alright. Um, we have, am I reading? Do we have anybody else? Is that what we need to ask, or? Is there any other nominations on the floor? Seeing none. Looks like I'm extremely lucky. So, um, let's do a roll call. Or, or, do you want me to do it three times? I guess we'll do it three times, make sure everything's in order. Um, third time, do we have anybody else that would, uh, like to put their name in for mayor? Good one. Alright, well with that, we'll close it, and we will get a roll call.
Great. Councilmember Grimm?
David Milne.
Councilmember Harpster?
Milne.
Councilmember Peralis?
Milne.
Councilmember Barajas?
Milne.
Uh, Councilmember Blaisdell?
Milne.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem Milne?
Uh, I'll vote for myself, so Milne, so thank you.
Great. Well, passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. And so that, now I'd like to open the floor for Mayor Protem.
I nominate Charles Grimm.
And I would second the nomination if we need to do that. So, also, do we have any other members that would like to be Mayor Protem? Going once. Going twice. Going three times. Alright, um, let's get a roll call on that one, just as well.
Councilmember Harpster?
Grimm.
Councilmember Peralis?
Charles Grimm.
Councilmember Barajas?
Charles Grimm.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
Charles Grimm.
Councilmember Grimm?
Grimm.
And Mayor, Mayor Milne?
Thank you, uh, Charles Grimm.
Great. That passes unanimously.
Alright.
Congratulations. Mayor Protem?
Alright, well with that, I'd like to take a five-minute recess, so we could re-seat. And I'd like to have Grimm on my right side, and hopefully he was switched with Councilman Harpster. And, uh, everybody else would like to stay the same, if we don't mind. And, uh, like to have five minutes, so we get some pictures with family, and, uh, yeah, so right now it's 7:09, and we'll be back at 7:14. Thank you. Alright, it is, uh, seven four, it is 7:14, and we are back in session. we're back in session, everybody? So with that, I would like to, we're going to move on to number six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by rule call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. We're going to do, so 6A is approval of meeting minutes for August 4th and August 11th. Bills and communications approving claims in a total amount of $4,648,953.92. Number C, Resolution Number 4637, change order number 11, process water reuse facility Phase 2 construction contract with Tappany, and Resolution Number 4638, RH2 Engineering PSA Amendment 7. So, and, Mr. Grimm, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay.
Alright, and just for the sake of order, do we have anybody that want to remove anything before? Nope. Okay, can we get a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimm?
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralis?
Yes.
And Mayor Milne?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. It passes unanimous.
Thank you for that. So we're going to move on to item number seven, which is proclamation acknowledgements. I'm not seeing any listed. We're going to jump to eight, which is public comments. The public may address the council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the purpose of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require considerations by council over time, and after a deliberate process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor, and you'll see it on the clock there. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. Lastly, when called upon, please state your name and city or county residency and to the microphone before providing your comments. So with that, do we have anybody that'd like to make a public comment? Alright, Mrs. Mahoney. Um, yeah, why don't we have you first?
Am I live?
You're live now.
Uh, thanks for having me up. It's a very important night.
Can you state your name and?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Stephen L. Wilson, Pasco.
Okay.
I was born here, um, I've gone away, I've come back. Uh, I really like the leadership and dedication that I've seen out of city council. Uh, I'm not too impressed with the county commissioner side of things. Uh, what I'm glad to see is that we move quickly. We understand the importance and the nature of our jobs here at, uh, city council, at least that I've seen since about 2018. Uh, there are a couple of concerns when you move quickly. I know we have to be expeditious. Uh, I would look across the board and say there's a lot of seasoned wisdom, a lot of young wisdom, smart people doing capable work. Uh, I would like to kind of just interject a little bit of political persuasion. I would ask that we don't endorse any more red hats because that's too extreme for me. Uh, I like that our outgoing mayor, who is strong, strongly right-leaning, is going to have his opportunity to represent us at a higher level. I'm proud of the work that he's done. Uh, I was a little critical of him when he came in. Uh, held his feet to the fire personally, watched him just excel. So I expect the same. Mr. Milne, your building, uh, off Lewis Street, I used to live by the Cable Bridge when that was a thrift store. So, uh, those were the days. I mean, it was rough for us back then. Now it isn't. I like to see my city grow. I like to see what you guys are doing. I just caution that we dare to break away from any really traditional, strongly traditional values that seem to maybe hinder any progress that we could make. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments, and I appreciate the nice comments you did. Uh, yeah, a lot has changed in the, since the 90s, and yeah, I remember it was a thrift store as well. It's a, yeah, it's a... Anyway, but thank you, and we'll definitely keep that under consideration.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I think we're going to go next to Mrs. Mahoney.
Is this on?
It's, it is on.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident, to Pasco via RCW 42.56. See my past requests made to Pasco and to council on 5/5/25, 6/2/25, 8/4/25, and more regarding no fines paid by Pasco and spot zoning developers Hayden Homes for killing our eight floodplain American bald eagles and their eaglets, and more. Again, provide all past and present ULID and LID designs for my property with start dates, costs, and notice to me via the US mail include Pasco officials and Pasco employees communications regarding harassment and retaliation against me and my property. Pasco's CIP budget is well over a half a billion taxpayer dollars. How much is spent on a low barrier homeless shelter for people and a low-cost spay neuter clinic for dogs and cats? Currently, it's at zero. From June to Christmas, WSU took in 55,251 dogs and 14,145 cats for research, and then the dogs and cats are killed. See WSU records. How many dogs and cats does Tri-City Animal Services send to WSU for research? And how much is Pasco and TCAS paid to send them? In the Tri-City Herald, Animal Control Rehire Angela Zeiler said of sending dogs to WSU for research, quote, "The dogs euthanized at WSU were ones we would have had to kill anyhow," end quote. Also, see Pasco City Council Retreat on 8/11/25, page 28. See the Animal Control Usage Pay System. Usage pay is based on the number of animals that are taken in from each city. The Usage Pay System puts a bounty on our dogs and cats. Also, see Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr's authorization of no due process at Animal Control on 4/1/19 with council. The Usage Pay System, or bounties, combined with no due process, gives us an animal control system that is lawless, brutal, and cruel. We have a catch-and-kill roundup system that sends our dogs and cats to WSU for research, and then they're killed. Tri-City Animal Services has no vigorous adoption program and no spay neuter services for dogs and cats. What Tri-City Animal Services does have is no due process, a Usage Pay System or bounty, and a contract with WSU to send our dogs and cats for research since April 16, 2003. My comments are for the record and to put Pasco on notice, and hello to my Brooklyn.
Alright, well, thank you for that. Do we have anybody else from the audience that would like to make a public comment? Mr. Grandwell?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. Thomas Grandwell, Big Maple Properties, 108 North 4th Avenue in Pasco. Congratulations, Mayor. It feels like yesterday you were sitting down there, uh, just enjoying Monday night, our exciting Monday nights.
Yes.
But, uh, I'm really proud of you. Um, two weeks ago, I had a chance to speak before council in three minutes. He'd interrupted me many, many times, came way too quick because I was, uh, highlighting the positive things that are going on in downtown. Um, I want to talk a little bit about what you can do to help us out. Uh, I had a chance to mention the mural program. I'm sure you've seen the new, the two new murals that are going up. Uh, that's, that's an incredible program, as well as opening up the ability to have murals in downtown. We're seeing more pop-ups, so that's, that's a really fun, great thing to see. Um, when people come to you with their challenges, I would strongly recommend you putting, pushing them towards the city staff, the subject matter experts. Right now, we have a district resource officer. Well, actually, every, every time you get a new district resource officer...
Oh, yes, please push the button. Sorry. My voice projects enough, I guess. Um, I'm, I'm always impressed by how good they are, how responsive they are. And if they see anything going on, I would strongly recommend calling in. Uh, they, our, our police are excellent. They're there to help. If you see things that are unsafe in the parks, contact the Parks Department, get to know, tell them to get to know our park ranger. Our park ranger program is incredible, very responsible, responsive, and doing a great job. Um, so yeah, push people toward, if they want to do expanded uses of their properties, guide them towards city staff. I'm, I'm an example of somebody who came here and who is, who is able to live the immigrant dream and, and succeed in downtown because of city staff's guidance. It's really, we have a great city staff in place. And, uh, also encourage them to talk with their neighbors. We see there are a lot of, a lot of businesses succeeding in the area. Uh, every business owner that I've talked to is, they're very open to communication. They're very open to sharing how they've been successful. So that's, that's another thing that they can do. Um, when it comes to security, same thing. Communicate with each other. Buy cameras, put them up, get some good coverage, because the more that we communicate with each other, the more secure we are. I know that in my little neck of the woods, people don't mess around because of that. And, uh, also, feel free to guide them, like I said, towards the actual subject matter experts, and tell them to be wary of just going to one person who, or people who may be, um, guarding that information, because our staff is very, very approachable. Our, they're, they're great. I've been here for five, six years downtown, and I really, really appreciate everything the city staff does. And also, welcome, uh, city manager Stewart. It's great to meet you. Thank you very much.
Alright, well, thank you for that. Much appreciated, and, uh, yes, we're very fortunate to have great, uh, city staff, and, uh, yeah, it's hard to imagine that, uh, nine years ago, I was sitting with you in the audience, uh, watching a totally different council, but, uh, again, very blessed by God. With that, anybody else in the audience like to make a public comment? That's seen, going once, going twice, going three times. Alright, well, that will move us on to number nine, which is reports from committees and/or officers. So I know we've very active council here, so let's just start at the very end, and we'll work our way this way, and looks like everybody's light-witted up on that one. So we'll start off with Councilman Harpster.
Okay. Uh, last week on Tuesday, I met with Christopher Dare, who, uh, spoke during public comment a few weeks ago. He is the new director of the Columbia Basin Veterans Center, uh, which is here in Pasco on, um, 7th Avenue, and, uh, he relocated here from, uh, Sparks, Nevada, which is actually where my wife is from. Uh, so his role, and he was a, a council member in Sparks, his new role here, he's an advocate for veterans here in the community. Um, I like that, uh, this center is here in Pasco, and, um, met with him, just talked about what they do, what they offer. One of the things they offer is, uh, they call it Coffee Bunker Northwest, Where Camaraderie Brews. And, uh, it's the first and third Friday of each month and last Saturday of each month from 8:00 to 10:00. And, uh, just free breakfast and coffee for veterans to come out, socialize with each other. Um, one of the things we talked about was that's especially important because 22 veterans a day commit suicide in the United States. Um, when I left active duty in 2014, that number was 16. And so it continues to grow, and, um, oh, four or five years ago, uh, former Secretary of Defense General Mattis spoke at an event at CBC, and, um, he did a Q and A session. One of the questions I asked was related to, uh, a number of veterans who commit suicide, and my question was essentially, what can we do? And his answer was camaraderie, whatever that may be. And, um, I know both of, uh, uh, all the terms are changing. Mayor Milne and, and, uh, Councilman Barajas have, uh, kids who serve and, um, are familiar with all this, so... Um, one of the other topics we discussed was the need for a VA center, and then I think it was the next day where the news came out that Tri-Cities is getting a VA center. And, um, that will serve the 16,000 veterans that live here in Tri-Cities. Um, don't know when that construction is set to start, but, um, that's really good. So, um, he did want to come and present to council on the services they offer. He did the same with the county commissioners. I told him that I would pass that on to the mayor and, uh, for your consideration, so.
Yeah, we'd love to have that kind of presentation, so thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Barajas?
Thank you. Uh, real quick, I want to share that, um, on behalf of city council, city Pasco, um, I participated at the ribbon cutting for the NAACP. Uh, they've been in this region, in Tri-Cities, for 75 years and have not had an office, and so, um, it was this Saturday when they finally made it official with a brick and mortar establishment, um, right in the heart of our downtown. Um, actually, right behind the, the courthouse. And so, uh, Governor Ferguson was present, so it was a huge event. It was well-attended by a lot of community members, by a lot of organizations across the state, uh, that made, helped make this a very special commemoration. So, congratulations to NAACP. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I do appreciate you stepping up and, uh, representing the city. Uh, solo pigeons online, and it's going to be a great job, so thank you very much for doing that. We're going to go to Mayor Protem Grimm.
Mr. Mayor, last Thursday, I went to the Ben Franklin Transit Monthly Meeting, and we, um, heard the quarter-two performance report. We had a very lively discussion on the utilization of progressive design-build method for construction of the facility's maintenance building, and just really what's going to get the best bang for the taxpayers' money and, um, not leave us hanging in any kind of sense of that. And also, Mr. Dose, the new CEO of Ben Franklin Transit, is approaching his one-year anniversary, so he gave us a year-end review of just really kind of what he came into and the things he's implemented and put into place since then, and um, he's doing great things there. His leadership, his motivation, his, um, thoughtfulness and ideas are just going a long ways, and then, um, I watched you, Mr. Mayor, give a speech this morning at Sage View High School for their ribbon cutting, and holy cats, what a turnout. Several staff was there. Must have been over 500 people there, if I had to guess, maybe even more. It was the largest ribbon cutting I've ever been a part of, and it was just really good to see the, the public come out and just be so supportive of, um, of a new high school here in Pasco. And if that's enough, there's another ribbon cutting tomorrow at Orion High School, so that really says something about just the growth and development here. Not too many cities have two high schools opening within 24 hours of each other, so yeah, great things happening here in Pasco. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that report. Yeah, I was actually quite shocked by all the people there for their ribbon cutting, but, uh, it was a good time, and again, I appreciate your attendance. Uh, there were so many people, it was hard to see which other members of the council were there, but, uh, you know, I really appreciate you coming out. With that, we've got, uh, Councilman Peralis.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also attended the NAACP New Office Ceremony, and, and I'll just go ahead and say great leadership from, from Councilmember Barajas, gave a great proclamation. I'm very grateful for her leadership. It was, it, it, like, like she said, it was very well-attended. Tons of people were there. Governor was there. He gave a good little speech and, and how, how much the NAACP, um, legal defense fund meant to him in law school and stuff. Uh, it was awesome. It was, it was a really good environment, and I was very happy to see that building. I've driven by that building a lot, and I always wondered if someone was ever going to use it, and then, when I saw that they, they procured it, so it was really cool. And, and again, thank you, uh, Councilmember Barajas. It was really good, really good proclamation.
Well, thank you. Thank you again both for being there. Um, as for myself, also a very busy week. Um, one of the highlights was attending the affinity at Broadmoor, the grand opening. Um, not 55 yet, I'm getting there close, but, uh, it's for 55 and up. Kind of like a retirement folks, but, uh, retirement community. It's kind of like a cruise ship when it's on land. It, uh, had a great, a lot of great, um, items, as in venue, or not venues, but, uh, amenities, that's what I want, amenities, from billiard and Irish pub, indoor pool, billiard room, uh, woodshop room, craft room, seemed like libraries, seemed like everything you could think of for active individuals in our community. Affinity at Broadmoor had it. Um, I was blessed to give the, the speech, and, um, also good turnout, and, yeah, I would, uh, recommend if anybody's 55 and older and wants a uh, entertaining or a very exciting lifestyle, to check that out, if that's in your wheelhouse. And also today, I did attend this wedding ceremony for our new city manager, Howard Stewart. It was also good, well-attended, and then also the Sage View High School ribbon cutting ceremony. Um, got to tour the facility. It's great to see that our high school students get a phenomenal facility that I would have loved to have had as a kid. Um, but it's good that we treat our kids well, and again, hopefully they get the A-plus education that we all want our students to get. So with that, I think we'll jump on to, uh, we're going to jump on to item B, which is the presentation, Mid-Columbia Library Annexation. And this is going to be from the deputy city manager, Reacher Sidell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and evening, council. Tonight, we have Kyle Cox, who is executive director for Mid-Columbia Library here, uh, to discuss a topic of vital importance to our community, uh, which is the value that, uh, libraries bring, bring to our community, and specifically Mid-Columbia Libraries. Uh, and also, uh, an important topic of potential annexation of the city of Pasco into the Mid-Columbia Library District. Um, and this would be, this would better serve our growing community, uh, with, uh, significant, um, needs and, uh, growing needs, I would say, which is good because people are reading more. Uh, Mr. Cox will be presenting an overview of how the library is currently serving our community, uh, exploring the benefits and challenges of the annexation and the process ahead for both of our agencies. Uh, please join me in welcoming Kyle Cox.
Okay. Thank you, city council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, as mentioned, I'm Kyle Cox, and the executive director and chief librarian of Mid-Columbia Libraries. We're also joined by, uh, Martine Valdez, who's our, the chair of our library district board of trustees, as well as Andy Workle, who's also a member of our board, and we have some of our great staff that are also here. Thank you for being here. So, with the brief time that we have, I want to just cover a couple topics, as Reacher mentioned. So, Mid-Columbia Libraries is an inter-county rural library district. We operate under the revised Code of Washington as a special district. We operate under the revised code of Washington as a special district that is able to levy property taxes. Public libraries in our state exist to support public education and development. We're governed by a seven-member board of trustees. Two of our board members are from Pasco. And our mission is to empower people to support learning and to strengthen community through literacy, enrichment and connection. So we're gonna do a quick review of library services in Pasco. We're gonna go back 115 years ago. So 115 years ago, Pasco began, uh, having library service from its Carnegie Library. A lot of communities in the West did. And then 77 years ago, voters created Mid-Columbia Libraries, the special district to serve Benton Franklin Counties. The following year, we started serving cities with the city of Kennelwick first. In 1960, voters approved a bond to build the Hopkins Street Library, which opened the following year. 52 years ago, Pasco began contract with Mid-Columbia Libraries to provide library services. In 1998, voters approved a bond to remodel the Hopkins Street Library as well as to do some other things. 12 years ago, the West Pasco Library began service. And then next year, we're looking forward to a new library at the Martin Luther King Junior Community Center. So lots going on. As mentioned, uh, at Hopkins Street, we've been serving proudly the residents of Pasco since 1973. This branch features the largest onsite Spanish language collection in our district. It has heavy usage from our customers on computer use, wifi sessions, copying, printing and faxing. We also experience high rates of reference questions here, actually the highest in the district. We're proud of our partnership with Catholic, uh, who has onsite community health worker to help support customers as they navigate. They sign up for things. It's been really positive. And this team at our branch is led by Mona Gonzalez. I have a couple of quick quotes I'm gonna read throughout the presentation. But here's a quote from, uh, one of your residents that uses that branch. "I rarely read. Libraries were intimidating to me. The Pasco Library is approachable and the staff is super friendly and helpful. I am now a regular visitor and I'm always looking forward to new books." Our second branch that we opened, uh, and we've been proudly serving the people of Pasco since 2013. Uh, this library features Eastern Washington's first full-service library drive-through with consistent use. This library experiences heavy collection use, so lots of checkouts and holds that are being satisfied by other libraries in the district. We also see high demand for programs and events at the West Pasco branch. We had 12,000 attendees just at this branch at programs and events in 2024. And the average storytime attendance is 40. And our great team is led by Doug Herrickstad, who's over there. Great job, Mr. Doug. Um, you do a great job. A quote from the customers, uh, customer that uses this library. "I'm so thankful for our wonderful librarians. Mid-Columbia Libraries, the West Pasco branch in particular, is a safe place for my whole family. My now teens have spent countless hours participating in community events hosted at the library." We do an annual customer satisfaction survey. Um, we really like to gauge what our customers want, what they need, what we could do better on. And what we found was that your residents value their library. And this is 2025. 96% of Pasco residents reported being very satisfied or satisfied with their overall experience in Mid-Columbia Libraries. It's pretty good, I think. If we're doing a good job, we have a great staff. Um, as part of our strategic plan, we're focusing on different areas, uh, as part of our, uh, community needs assessment. We asked our whole region what they needed and we responded in like. So, um, literacy and learning is a big focus for us. As with overall experience, Pasco residents highly rate their library and credit Mid-Columbia Libraries with providing excellent resources for their child and family. 98% agree or strongly, uh, agree. Helping their kids read more, enjoy learning and be more confident in their reading, 97%. Supporting learning and development of their child, 95%. Helping their child enter school ready to learn, 91% of Pasco respondents. Some, uh, quick quotes. "I take my child to the library for storytime every week. The library encourages learning for both of us and saves me the cost of always purchasing books. I really enjoy our time at the library." Another customer. "It's so nice to see my kids get excited to pick out new books to borrow and my son has started thinking about new things to learn about. My kid's curiosity and love of reading is growing exponentially because of our library." We're also looking at enrichment and recreation. Um, as with overall experience and literacy and learning, uh, Pasco residents highly rate their library on services for adults and collections for adults. Including enhancing their lifelong reading and learning, 97% of respondents strongly agreed or agreed. Enhancing their reading, viewing and listening for pleasure, 95%. Providing the books and content they want in an accessible and timely manner, 95%. "I especially appreciate the wide variety available at my library. These selections have helped me approach values-based conversations with my teenager and have made me a better parent. I found reading for enjoyment again in my adulthood and I can only thank my library. It's given me a new hobby and some joy outside of being a mom." And these are just some selections of the many comments that we get from your residents. Just looking at savings by Pasco residents in 2020, uh, 2024, Pasco residents save over $10 million. The value of the items checked out, that's just in one year. That includes 6.5 million, uh, worth of physical items checked out and 3.6 million, uh, for digital items checked out, which we were talking about earlier is getting more and more expensive. This does not include the cost of programs, events, uh, computers, faxing, wifi. So this is a very conservative estimate of the amount of money saved by your residents in using their library. They can spend that money and other stuff locally. Quick quote. "There's no way we could afford to purchase even a fraction of what our family has read from Mid-Columbia Libraries. The library has made it possible for me to homeschool my children. It helps me learn about any and everything I want to research and understand. Do I want to learn piano? The library has books for that. Do I need to help understanding what's going on with our constitution? They've got books on that. Anything I want to learn, I check my library first." So we're gonna do a quick pivot and we're gonna look at funding. Mid-Columbia Libraries is one of the 13 largest public library systems in our state. What's interesting though is that we are an outlier when it comes to the composition of our funding as nearly 40% of our revenues come from contracts. We currently have four service contracts. Pasco is the largest of the four. Um, it's important to note that most cities the size of Pasco have already annexed into their library districts, usually quite a few years ago. Pasco is an outlier in that respect. Not good or bad, but just an outlier. It's also important to note that MCL has the lowest total revenue per capita among the largest libraries. That means that we must be lean, efficient and focused on productivity to keep up with demand. And we're very proud of what we offer. I think we do a fantastic job with great staff, but we definitely run lean compared to other libraries. Considering and looking forward to annexation, we'll talk a little bit more about this. If Pasco annexed into MCL, this would line us up with the standard model of most like, or cities your size in the state. It would stable, offer stable levy funding rather than annual contracts, which are somewhat unpredictable. And would benefit both parties with long-term service planning and sustainability. When you look at levy rates, uh, in this, uh, neck of the state, you can see that MCL's levy rate is the lowest among neighboring library districts. We're at 23 cents and, and change. With the current MCL levy rate, Pasco homers, homeowners, if you were to annex in, would pay $23.80 per 100,000 of assessed valuation. According to Zillow, the current home value in Pasco as of last month is $419,686. If this was annexed, if you were annexed, this would translate to approximately $99.90. That would go to property taxes to support the library. It's important to think about for Pasco taxpayers because annexation would bring parity with other annex cities within the district at a very modest rate. And it's also lower than neighboring libraries. And I will say, pound for pound, we provide a lot more services, uh, content, um, with that low rate. We do a fantastic job. I'm proud of our staff. So quickly, uh, looking at the legal mechanism for annexation. Um, it is well-defined. It's pretty straightforward in the RCWs as to how a city would initiate and potentially annex into a library district. The city council initiates annexation via ordinance. You have the language, the language is actually in the RCWs. At that point, if you chose to do that, you'd be initiating the process. The state librarian would be notified of the ordinance. Then our library board of trustees would pass a resolution on annexation. If they concur, and I believe they would, uh, it's then sent to the county commissioners. The county commissioners pass a resolution calling for annexation for the next special election date. As far as the actual language, uh, that needs to happen, it's a simple majority is all that's needed to annex a city into a library district. Even the ballot language is in the RCWs. You can see that here. Shall the city of Pasco be annexed to the Mid-Columbia Library District? Yes or no? Uh, just thinking about, um, the state of annexation. The last annexation vote in Washington that failed was in 2004 in King County. There have been 30 annexation votes since then and they've all passed. That's the last one that failed. Specifically looking at resources from our state library, Eastern Washington and rural communities typically vote yes at a much higher rate than urban and Western Washington communities. So just thinking about this, I know you get to consider this as you're moving forward. Um, but looking at the state, the condition of the state, knowing the fact that we have a longstanding relationship and looking at all these factors, I think that it puts us in a good position if we were to pursue this. So I'm gonna end with, uh, with a quote that, uh, also was from your residents, uh, that we got this year. "Mid-Columbia Libraries has been an amazing resource for my family and me. It's a place that encourages a love of reading, a love of learning and storytelling for all ages. We're so grateful to have this wonderful resource in our community. Pasco's 52-year service history with MCL, your strong satisfaction and use position us well if we are to pursue this. Annexation is about getting the city into a place where we can sustain what is already working for your residents. And we can bring stability to funding and to future so that we can do even more." I don't know if we have a whole lot of time for questions, but, uh, I'm happy to answer any you might have.
Yeah, so any of the members of the council have a question for Director Cox? We had Councilman Harvester.
I don't have any questions, just, uh, appreciate the presentation and just a few comments. Um, I grew up going to the Hopkins Street Library all the time. And, um, as Doug knows, my family utilizes the, uh, West Pasco Library all the time. And, um, I mean, some of our most exciting Friday nights are going to chess club, so. Um, I just wanted to make the point that this is a really exciting opportunity for the voters to vote with the way that they voted on surveys, uh, to continue funding the libraries. And, um, helps the city balance our budgets in a more efficient manner while still providing, uh, services that these, that, uh, some residents, uh, may not have access to otherwise, like internet and, and reading and, uh, or, or books. Um, and so, uh, you know, the, uh, motion that we have later, the language seems strong notice of termination. That could be a negative connotation, but just wanna, uh, put it out there for the public's sake that, um, that's just the first step in the process to get us to, uh, really an alternative source of funding for this. So, um, appreciate all that you guys do and, um, the libraries here are just an amazing place. I used to spend a lot of time there, working during the day to get out of my own office. Then people start saying, hey, aren't you the city council? Can I talk to you about X, Y, Z? And so stay in my own office now. But, thanks.
Thank you for that, uh, Councilman Harvester. And yeah, I agree with you. What you're talking about, yes, it's, uh, a good thing if we could, uh, get them ball rolling on the, the annexation. So we got, uh, Councilman, um, Braz.
Thank you, Mayor. How much money, um, would this generate? Do we have a figure?
As far as if you were to annex.
If we were to annex in and you said it was like 90 some bucks a year?
It's about, so there's a couple of things because when it votes, my understanding is it doesn't go into effect immediately. It would go into effect the, the following fiscal year. So there is a little bit of a guesswork. But I'm assuming looking at your current AV, uh, times our current levy rate, it'd be about 3 million, about there.
Okay. So it'd, it'd be a little bit more than what we're paying right now?
Yes. Yeah. Because the, the contract as of right now, you're not paying the levy rate.
Right. Um, so I guess in, in essence, we're not, I mean, are we saving money by doing this? Or are we essentially asking the property, I mean, the residents with their property taxes to pay for this? So I'm trying to, if, if I'm asking that, let me back up. Is this a sales tax, property tax, we're, we're already getting money into the city, switcheroo type thing where we're having the residents essentially pay 100 bucks more per year to fund through?
My understanding is that's up to you. As in terms of how you want to do that.
Of course.
Um, you know, uh, like, for example, Kennelwick is annexed. It's been annexed for decades at this point. And what that means is that they are paying the, via their county taxes, the district directly for that value. As you would the port or a school district, et cetera. That's different right now because we're contracted. But as far as how the city would want to do that in terms of with your taxpayers, my understanding is that's up to you as the city council.
Okay. So maybe staff can answer this. Um, again, I'm just asking these questions because, uh, when the, the, a lot of the media did a lot of stories on this, people were asking all these questions. So that's why I'm kinda asking some of the ones that I saw. Um, so I guess what I'm asking is, we're not really saving money. I mean, we're saving money as a city because right now we pay from the general fund.
That is correct.
My question. So that money's sales tax, property tax, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, but it essentially would go up. Is that number, $3 million, will that go up essentially in years to come? You know, what we're gonna pay for services?
We do have escalation, so, uh, I believe next year you're looking at about 3 million. Uh, and then that number would go up as the, as the city would grow. There's some composite of growth. Um, so you are going to see that, uh, number increase, um, as the city grows with, with that composite growth number.
Okay. So let me try and land the plane here. Okay. So essentially, if we do this and we decide to, um, annex and terminate the contract, we can use that $3 million for other stuff that we can get down in the community, roads, things like that. Or, you know, whatever else we need to pay for.
That is correct. Uh, traditionally, um, cities, um, either they have their own library and they will, um, have a special library tax, a property tax as a part that comes into the city. There might be an independent library district as Mid-Columbia Library is. Or a city might choose to use your general fund, property taxes, sales taxes, utility taxes, whatever taxes come in, uh, that usually go into the function of public safety, uh, public works, things like that. Um, and, um, you would just add library to that service. And that is where the city of Pasco is. Um, so we do not have a separate line item, uh, of a library district levy, um, uh, that comes into the city, into the city's general fund. So there would be, uh, $3 million, uh, about, uh, savings per year that the city could use for other purposes.
Okay. Um, thank you very much. Yeah, I, I'd be in favor of this. I think, um, close to 100 bucks a year, you know, I guess less, a little less than 10 bucks a month, essentially for 450,000 dollar home. I, I think, um, you guys provide some really good services, you know, I frequent typically the one in Hopkins. But, um, no, I think this is a good way to streamline, um, the way that we're funding our services and stuff. And I'm sure you're like, well, it's about time, right? So I really appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I don't see any other comments. I will say, uh, I appreciate your good presentation, Director Cox. And, uh, I know growing up, I always wanted to tell everybody I was a cool kid, but I actually spent a ton of time in the library. I loved reading.
You could still be a cool kid and go to the library.
Everybody wanted me to watch like.
Yeah, but army of librarians, it'll tell you otherwise.
True, true. They're like, you don't watch MTV? No, I love the library. So, uh, I love reading. I still love reading. It's one of my passions when I have time, which seems to be very little. But, uh, again, you guys do a great service and I have visited your libraries in Pasco. And, uh, again, good job. So thank you for that. So I think you're off the hook.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
So with that, we're gonna move on to number 10, hearings and council action on ordinance and resolutions related thereto. So we got number A, which is public hearing and ordinance number 47, 4782, Big Sky Developers LLC easement vacation. And this is gonna be by Director Haley Miller.
Mayor Millen, I'm gonna recuse myself from this item.
Yes. Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight before you is an easement vacation request, um, for big-sized developers. And this will be a public hearing. And some background on this, this was a, I'm gonna skip ahead and then go back. So this is a, a photo showing the location there, just east of Convention Drive. And the development to the east of that red line, um, has, has an easement that was established in the early 1900s by, uh, railroad. So that was a 60-foot countywide road easement. And that is not designated as a purpose for a rose, road. Convention Drive will be used as a, a right of way, but there's a, a small sliver of three feet on the east side of Convention Drive that is not needed and goes into the backyards of the home. So the applicant is proposing to vacate this area of land. And here on the screen is what the city council would use as their approval criteria. And so traffic circulation, since this wasn't intended to be a portion of a road, traffic circulation will not be affected. And the three feet was not designated as a public use and property access won't be blocked. And we won't be creating a situation where there's a landlocked property that cannot access their site. And then as far as the public interest, we do, we staff did not view any harm by proceeding with this vacation. And, um, compensation in the appraisal, staff is recommending this be waived um, because the applicant will be providing additional right of way for, for Convention Drive, that public right of way. So given all of that, staff is recommending approval and I'm happy to answer any technical questions you may have before opening the public hearing.
All right. Does anybody on the council have, uh, any questions for Director Miller? Councilman Blais, I know I was kinda forgotten about you, but, uh, did you have any questions?
I do not.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So with that. So with that, we're going to open up the public hearing. Is that correct? I think it's correct. So do we have anybody that would like to speak on this? Going once, going twice, going three times? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. And if I could get a motion, Mayor Potem Grim.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4782, vacating the eastern three feet of the easement established by Auditor's File Number 487139, originally granted by the Northern Pacific Railway Company, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
All right. So we have a first by Mayor Potem Grim, and a second by Councilman Peralas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passed unanimously. All right, well, if we could grab Councilman Harpster there. All right, now we'll bring us on to number 11, which is ordinance and resolution is not related to hearings. So we have number A, which is resolution number 4639, providing notice of termination between the Mid-Columbia Libraries and City of Pasco. So I guess we're going to hit it off to you. Deputy City Manager, Richard Sedell.
Actually, former City Manager Dave Zabel is going to be presenting on this matter. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So as I transition out, I get to revisit this topic with you. We talked about it last, I think, or we've talked about it at Budget a couple of times. I think we first started talking about it this year at least, back in April or March, late March at your retreat. And as council, just had a great presentation from Mr. Cox, appreciate that. So we're here for part two to talk about the resolution that would initiate the termination process, the ILA, and I just say, I don't think I've ever been in a council meeting where people were excited about terminating an ILA. Thank you for that. But it does, it does initiate a new process. I want to, I want to say a couple of things, though, first, because annexation is not new. Matter of fact, it was contemplated in the 2010 ILA that started all this with Mid-Columbia Libraries, that there was actually a clause in that interlocal agreement that required, or that provided for a discussion between the Mid-Columbia Library District and the city about annexation, and it had to actually happen before 2016. So we started talking about this back in February of 2016. So it's been around for quite some time. Kyle's presentation was very thorough, so I don't want to, I don't want to go through a whole lot about it. I'll say that we renegotiated this in 2022, and we did have a discussion about annexation at that point in time, but taking you back to 2022, it was right at the tail end of COVID, and with a lot of uncertainty and, I guess, confusion over where things were actually going to go and how long it would last, there wasn't a whole lot of appetite to have that kind of a discussion over a structural change that big. And so the time is right now. I will say that, you know, the resolution itself, a little bit about that, it authorizes the city manager to send a termination notice regarding the current ILA to Columbia Library, basically initiates an eighteen-month process of exploration with them. Time to negotiate things that we may need to negotiate, having to do with the existing branches and future branches of libraries in the city, and it allows eighteen months to get the item on the agenda, to go through the other processes that Mr. Cox talked about that are statutorily required, to allow people to have time to absorb information, the two governments to communicate what's happening, and to strategize together. So all to say, this is a, what's going to happen over the next several months, we're council to approve this, is a pretty well-defined little pathway. And then as Executive Director Cox said, dozens, literally dozens of cities have done this annexation over the last fifteen years or so, so it's pretty well-known. Went through the benefits of it. I will say, it does give us probably, it does strengthen us from our regional identity. It transitions the city to a full membership, which is something that we've discussed many times over. There's some long-term cost efficiencies to it, and I do want to address a little bit more Councilmember Peralas's earlier question. The difference is Pasco really isn't paying their full freight right now as a city. So if you look at how the, when we negotiated this in 2022, and Executive Director Cox and I, our foreheads are just a little bit flatter from that negotiation, and we had a great referee in Chairman Valdez, and, but that, it's basically based on a formula using Kennewick as a framework, and it's population-based, so the, the district is a levy, and it's X cents per thousand, in this case, twenty-three cents currently. We knew we were going to have a lot of, as a matter of fact, we had, we had a ton of very high, high cost, expensive industrial on the way. Industrial in itself doesn't use the library, kind of took the position of bringing on another five or six billion dollars' worth of assessed valuation. And industrial doesn't really impact the library, but it does in terms of the library levy rate, because once that goes into the denominator, you're probably going to see that twenty-three cents drop, even adding the City of Pasco, at which point the City Pasco would actually be paying the residents of Pasco, and property owners would be paying the same rate as everyone else that's annexed into the district. So, long story short, to answer your question, it does put us on parity in terms of Pasco paying its freight with the rest of the community, with the rest of the, with the members of the district. So with that, staff recommends approval of Resolution 4639. And any questions of council?
Do we have any questions from the council? I'm not seeing any, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get a motion, Mayor Potem Grim?
I move to approve Resolution Number 4639, authorizing the city manager to serve a notice of termination of the interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Pasco and Mid-Columbia Libraries.
Second.
So we got a motion by Mayor Potem Grim, and a second by Councilwoman Peral, or not Peralas. Don't know why I said that one. Sorry about that. Peralas.
Thank you.
Getting a little embarrassed on that one. So if we could, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Aye? So with that, motion passed unanimously. So we're going to go on to B, which is a quasi-additional ordinance, number 4783, the Webster Court rezoned from RS20 to R1, and again, that's going to be Director Haley Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight before you is another presentation on libraries. Thank you. So tonight before you is a rezon from a property that is located over at Argent and Road 84, and it's about an acre in size, and it's referred to as Webster Court, and the applicant is proposing to go from RS20 to R1 zoning. Here's a photo of the site, surrounded by other single-family residential uses, and the applicant is proposing to go to R1, which gives a little more flexibility with unit types and lot sizes, and the low-density residential range for this property is three to, three to six units. Here's a zoning map showing the designation by the comprehensive plan, land use map, which is low-density residential. And the next slide shows the existing zoning, which is surrounded by RS20 properties, and this property is proposing to go to R1. And here are the requirements for zoning petition, and staff has verified that all of these items have been met. And this is the process where we're at, and at the very end of the process, so this has gone through the petition, public noticing process, and then a public hearing with the hearing examiner, and then the findings and recommendation are included in your packet, and tonight before you, we are finalizing this step and asking council to consider approving this rezon. So happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right. I did want to switch it over to Mr. Erickson, Ferguson, sorry.
I don't know what it's up today. I was on a roll, and all of a sudden, something threw me off.
No, absolutely. No. So, thank you, Mayor. This is a quasi-additional matter. It's a hearing proceeding to render a final decision on materials that are presented. It's defined as a proceeding in which the council defines the legal rights, duties, and privileges of specific parties in a hearing proceeding or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies, and the hearing must be fair in three respects: form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows: A, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties; B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally; whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing, prior to hearing the facts; D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing; and finally, E, any other conflict a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make those known. Seeing none, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings? Seeing none, please proceed.
All right. Thank you for that, Eric Ferguson. So back to Haley Miller. Does anybody in the council have any questions for her?
I had a question, so, for staff, or probably more Eric Ferguson. So on our comp plan, you know, we're supposed to obviously be promoting heavy infill in the City of Pasco. I mean, obviously, that's the goal. So on this one, if you look at it, there's, you know, houses all around it that have, like, one-acre lots, and we're supposed to represent our district, but when you're changing the district like that, you know, obviously, I'm not against that kind of change, because, you know, obviously, you have house, 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 very beautiful houses, nice yards. They all have one-acre lots. If it was to say hypothetically, if it was to unpass, like, say it was, we're to vote this down, what then happens, I mean, when we're on a council going against our comp plan? I mean, I kind of know the answer, but I would like you to maybe clarify it for people. Is that what is going to happen?
Sure. So essentially, what you're saying is that there's the requirements that Ms. Miller previously mentioned. It would essentially be that, so what, how this process has gone is that, you know, as it's gone through its particular steps, it's gone to the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner made findings and conclusions, and has based a recommendation on those findings, that it does meet the requirements that, and the biggest really one is what you allude to, that it is consistent with the comp plan. So in other words, that when you went through, or when the council went through that process of designating the, you know, the areas in their comp plan, their comprehensive plan, this is consistent with that. So that is a really, that carries a lot of weight, in, in the sense that as a preliminary matter, you can't do something that's inconsistent with your comp plan, but if, that doesn't mean necessarily if it's consistent with your comp plan that you have, you're bound to, to approve the rezon. What it means, though, is that then you would need to come back in a closed record hearing setting, and then go through that process, look at the record that went in front of the hearing examiner, discuss that, have the same parties that were allowed to speak at the open record hearing, be able to address the council, and if you decided after that you wanted to move forward and make your own findings separate and apart from what the hearing examiner did, you could do that, but I'm not going to lie to you, the hearing examiner is very good at this and does a good job for us to make sure that, that he's following the rules, and, and so, does that mean necessarily that you're bound by his recommendation? Absolutely not. But I do want to caution you that there's a, that there would have to be some reason that the council believed didn't meet those requirements that Ms. Miller laid out before on this matter. So we can go, I think we could probably go back and go over those if we needed to, but the long and short of it is, it's a, it's a pretty heavy lift to, to not go forward with the hearing examiner recommendation. I'm not saying it's impossible. It's usually not recommended, but the comp plan is really, has, carries a lot of weight, especially with regard to rezones, because essentially, you've already said what you, the council has already said what they think this zone should be, so you really would be going uphill.
All right. Thank you for that. Again, it's very difficult. I mean, obviously, I know this area because this is my district. I know exactly where these are, because my kids went to Livingston for a while, so it's extremely hard. I mean, it feels like we're bound to vote a certain way, but, you know, in our hearts, we want to vote a different way. So I, thank you for that clarification. So with that, I'm asking Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, we have.
Oh, you're good. I just have a comment, Mr. Mayor, maybe Director Miller. I've scrolled through this a few times. I saw a few letters that some residents had sent in denoting their various reasons for disapproval of wanting to see this happen. Was, was there any I missed here that were also submitted to the hearing examiner? Or was it just those, were those the ones we saw from these, I think it's three or four residents here?
Yes, I believe that is all the letters. It looks like there wasn't anyone in attendance at the hearing, and.
Okay, and that's what I couldn't find.
Those were the written comments. It looked like from four people, and maybe two of them lived with each other or had the same last name, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Well, with that, I'm not seeing any other questions. So Mayor Potem Grim, can we get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 4783, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located near the corner of West Argent Road and Road 84, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
So we got a motion by Mayor Potem Grim, and a second by Councilman Peralas. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against, say nay, and I'll be the nay. All right, so, and did we get, did we hear from Blaisdell? Did, okay, so it was a six to one?
She wrote a yea.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear that, so. Five, one, I'm sorry. Can't do my math today. All right, so we'll move on to number C, ordinance number 4784, carryover funds for capital projects from the 2023 to 2024 biennium, and we got interim Director Garcia. Or Richard Sedell?
Yes, Mayor. Go ahead, Griselda.
Okay. Good evening. Yes, I'm here remotely. So last week, we shared the list of the projects that were active at the end of 2024 with available budget, which we were requesting to carry over into the current biennium. And tonight, we are seeking approval of the ordinance to formally carry over that budget authority into the current biennium.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Do we have any questions or comments? I'm not seeing any, so if I could get a motion, Mayor Potem Grim?
I move to adopt ordinance number 4784, amending the 2025-2026 biennial budget, ordinance number 4750 of the City of Pasco, Washington, by providing supplemental thereto to provide for additional appropriation from the carryover of the prior year budget to complete capital projects and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
So we got a motion, we got the first by Mayor Potem Grim, and we got a second by Councilwoman Peralas. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? All right. Passed unanimously. We're going to go on to D, which is Resolution Number 4640, enacting the city council speed limit setting policy, three minutes, by Deputy City Manager, Richard Sedell.
I will pass this on to our twice-former city manager again, Dave Zabel.
Well, good evening again, council and mayor. And before you again, hopefully to wrap something up, we've been talking about for a while. We've had a couple of starts on this, speed limit setting policy, and as council is keenly aware, I mean, the authority to set speed limits rests with the council, but there's a couple ways in which you have authority, and this policy delves into both of those. In developing a speed limit, speed limit policy, I think the underlying thing we need to think about is you're, you're basically setting a speed limit for the, for a road under ideal conditions. In doing so, you want to take into account a lot of things. They call it context-sensitive, and Councilmember Peralas, the last time we talked about this, was, was very keen to this idea, and so some of our earlier drafts maybe, maybe were more from the consultants in particular, perhaps a little bit more leaning towards eighty-fifth percentile and fiftieth percentile of traffic. Yeah, those are things that are hugely important in a traffic analysis, but so are presence of curbs, crash data, lighting, intersection design, pavement conditions, any number of things that can impact the safety of a vehicle traveling on a public roadway. And so we, we kind of worked through some of those earlier renditions, sent one out those earlier renditions, sent one out a couple weeks ago to council for council comment, and we received some comment back, and so you have a redlined version of the changes that were made, as well as a clean copy in your packets. I don't have a whole lot more to add, other than I think the one thing, and I think it's really important for the public to understand this, is council has some amazing authority on non arterial streets, but that amazing authority comes with one action you can take without a traffic engineering and analysis or investigation, and that is to lower the speed limit to 20 miles an hour. Probably not necessarily a popular thing to do, except in a few maybe limited circumstances. And even in that case, the policy would provide, and state, as state, mirroring state statute, that you could raise it back up to the previous speed limit, if you do that within a year. If you wait longer than a year, then you need a traffic investigation and analysis. So, non arterial streets, that's just something the state statute requires. So, and hopefully, there's a, the public's out here listening, and this council really doesn't have the authority to be able to just acquiesce to a, to request to raise this speed limit from 30 to 35, or lower it from 40 to 30, because the neighborhood might feel that way. It certainly might start an investigation. I mean, that's up to council to determine, but it could certainly start an investigation, and the kind of study that it would take for, to support council making that kind of a decision. But council can't do that without an engineering analysis of that kind. So, I don't know, unless the council has some questions about the policy itself, I don't know that I really need to add a whole lot more. Recommend that council approve the, approve the policy by passing a resolution.
Thank you for that. I know we've gone over quite a lot, but let's start off with the questions with Councilman Peralis.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Yeah, I've had a couple. I mean, there's, there's a couple hills I want to dive on with this thing, but I think the frequency of the reviews needs to be changed. I don't, I'm not in favor of the three to five. I would, I'd rather see like two to four. And I only say that because a lot of things change, traffic volumes, like you said, crash data, land use, we're developing. It may not be the staff's appetite to do it more frequently, but I think we should rather than wait. And so, that, that would be one of my asks, would be to change that portion in the policy.
Next, I have a question regards to the 12-month reversion. What does that, what does that actually mean when it says it needs to be, if we don't like what we're seeing, we, so we have to change it, we can change it back within 12 months?
Within 12 months, to the speed that it was.
Okay.
To the speed that it was.
I guess I don't have really a problem with that. I sometimes, at first, I want, what I wanted was, let's say, we kind of just wait it out a little bit, if there's a way where we can defer from having to actually do an engineering study after that 12 months, if we still had a little bit of control. But I think you had said that statute was pretty clear that if we waited over 12 months, that we'd have to actually do that engineering study.
Yes, it's unfortunate. I mean, most of us common sense would say council heard from the neighborhood, people didn't like 30, so we lowered it to 20. 20 is maybe too slow, let's try 25. Can't do that. Got to raise it back to 30 or do a traffic analysis. And that, that's not a, that's not on the council, it's not on city code, it's state statute.
Okay. I think the other issue is, I know there's a plank in here. I want to make sure that, you know, it talks about like road, road design, you know, we've gotten a couple emails today. It didn't specifically say speed cushions, speed humps. And so, is that section rather broad that, that could essentially be implemented?
Yeah, that would be part of engineering.
Okay. So, it's not precluding any of that stuff that's not stated in there? Okay. Yeah, I think other than that, I really didn't have an issue with it. It was a lot better, the current version is a lot, a lot better than what was presented months ago. But again, I think my biggest thing would just be the frequency of the reviews from three to five. Instead of three to five, back, I would like to see two to four, unless, you know, so that'd be my ask of the council, if we can change that portion. Other than that, I think this is a good policy. We've, we've kind of beat it up to death, and so, I think this is, this is a pretty good thing to build on. So, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Start with Mayor Potem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, my, my comments, or what I have to say is more of a comment. It's along the lines of what our former city manager, Dave Zabel, was really reminding. This was for me kind of an exercise of frustration and futility, because you, this is one of those things, you get on council and you say, hey, here's my chance to make a difference. We're all commuters, like you said. We are the local government, and we should be able to enact change, and to find out that we are literally handcuffed so much by state statute. Now, on one hand, I get it, we want continuity within the state of Washington, that you go to various areas and there's a general sense of the, the traffic laws haven't drastically changed. But on the other law, the, you know, principle of subsidiarity says government at the, the most local level possible is the best. And another way of saying it, the further you get away from a problem, the harder it is to fix it. So, for people, you know, in Olympia, because that's where that happens, to make decisions about how we set our speed laws in Pasco was very frustrating, because again, you, you get elected to office with this, you know, the ideals of how you want to make a difference and change, and this was one of those areas that kind of we ran into, this is a terrible pun, pardon the roadblock, we ran into. But, you know, I'm grateful staff brought this as far as we did. I'm grateful the residents who raised this so we could explore this and flesh it out and get it better. But I was sorely disappointed how much we were really handcuffed by the state as our former city manager brought out, so.
I mean, four and a half decades of public service, I don't, I don't understand that one either. But I will say that probably what got Olympia working on policies like this is because other communities may not have been as judicious in how they set speed limits, you know. So, they're, they're trying to put some safeguards in there, and every, every good intention has unintended consequences, I think, so.
Tough cases make bad laws. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Let's move on to Councilman Harpster.
No questions, just a few comments. One, as Mr. Zabel stated, you know, there is a process to follow here. And I remember when we first started discussing this topic, I think it was a consensus of most of the folks up here, like, let's vote on it tonight. And then, after a little bit of research, realized, hey, there's a, a process which includes getting a policy in place, which is what we're doing this evening. And so, that makes me very comfortable. I like that roles and responsibilities are defined in here between city council and Public Works Department. It, it, you know, makes me think of, it just wouldn't be my place to tell Public Works what I want in a certain area, similar to, I wouldn't tell, you know, Chief Crowley Rosky how I think they should do their training or, or whatnot. So, I like the rules are defined, and then also like that the policy details the need for studies and data in many situations. Somebody made the comment, you might have neighbors who want something in particular, but if the studies and data don't support that, then there may not be a need for it. This gives us the authority to sometimes have an exception, while also still following, I think, proper procedures to get to that point. And then, just want to give thanks to Public Works and Mr. Ferguson and his staff for the efforts and the work on this. I know, probably wasn't fun or easy or just a joyful thing to work on, but appreciate the efforts nonetheless from both of you. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilman Harpster. Do we have any comments by Councilwoman Blaisdell?
No.
All right. And I, no, we have Councilwoman Barajas.
I was waiting for everybody to speak. I just want to say exactly what Councilman Harpster is just said. I agree totally on that situation. We need to, we need to, although we want to come into a position within city council to make change, positive change, change that improves the quality of, quality of life of our, of the residents in our city. We also need to keep in mind that there's experts in, in subject matter, and we need to follow council. We need to follow Mr. Ferguson, in this case, advice. We have people in place, because they are experts, and we should follow their counsel, not only to, to do what's right by the residents, but also to avoid getting into a situation of liability, because we, as individuals, probably coached, or, you know, we want to do something right by our neighborhoods, our districts, and then we end up doing something wrong for the rest of the city. So, again, let's follow policy. Let's follow the council of the experts and our legal system. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. I did want to go back to Councilman Peralis's idea. I know we talked about three to five, and he was asking for two to four. Was there any members of the council that wanted to support an amendment to that, or do we want to leave it as is?
If he, restate that one more time.
I think, oh, I'll like Councilman Peralis.
The context would be like, if there's issues with something over the speed limits, I think having more periodic review, so like two years, would be better than waiting like three to five. Because I don't like the whole three to five, it seems kind of arbitrary, depending on what staff members we have. So, I figured more periodic review, I mean, I can give you a laundry list of things that we should have been reviewing, right? I think we've already demonstrated that. So, I think it's okay to, for us to kind of bump it up a little bit, in case we do want to review some of the speed limits around here. So, that, that was my thing. I didn't like three to five. So, let me think about it, with the whole 12 months, sometimes things can shake out. It takes time for people to change their behavior, maybe a year, you know, maybe over a year, you would see a change, and then maybe up to two years, something different. So, that was my thinking on it, at least. But, you know, just a little bit sooner, that's it.
All right. So, Councilman Harpster?
Yeah, I would just want to know from staff or Mr. Ferguson, where the three to five came from in the first place.
So, that comes from previous experience of our deputy public works director, who used to be a traffic engineer. So, that's the type of policy she's seen in other cities. But I think that it also includes the words as needed, which really gives us the ability to shorten that period as, as you may see fit.
I think we do have places in our community where you might wind up with a quicker review necessary, because, you know, we're growing out at, up and, up to the north and out to the west quite a bit. There's things that have happened in the east part of town with industrial development out there and PM peak hour, traffic changes that could push. So, I think having that as needed piece in there is really helpful, because even Court Street, which we were talking about earlier, you know, three years from now, when maybe there's some things going, or have gone vertical and are operational out in Broadmoor, and as well as the condominium units just the other side of 182, it may not be three years before we need to look at that stretch again. So, I think having that as needed piece as conditions change, you know. You also have widening and things like that that are happening, where you might have a lower speed limit on a road because it doesn't have shoulders, might have bar ditches next to it, because it's a, today, it's a, it's a road that may be not safe to go faster on with a lot of traffic. And, you know, development occurs, and now you have 38 feet of pavement, curbs and gutters, streetlights, those kind of things that maybe you can raise payment up, or the traffic's up on that. It isn't always, always about lowering. It's about efficiency.
That answers my question. I think I'm good with it as presented, with the as needed language in there.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'll just say, yeah, I think if, I'm taking you for your word. I'll call you back. I will. He said as, as, it's actually if warranted. So, no, I think if that's the context, then, like I said, I'll make a mental note and written note here, and, you know, if we, an issue arises in the community, you know, yeah, I'll just kind of hold our staff's feet to the fire if we have to do something like that. I'm okay with that. So, appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification on that. If I could get a motion, Mayor Potem Grim?
I move to approve Resolution Number 4640, adopting and approving the city council speed limit setting policy.
Second.
All right. So, we got a motion by Mayor Potem Grim, a second by Councilman Peralis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
All right. So, again, passing unanimously. Let's go on to number E, which is Resolution Number 4641, adopting a commitment goal to reduce fatal and serious injuries by city roads by 50% by 2040. And again, this is going to be now by Director Maria Sarah.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This is a continuation of a presentation provided two weeks ago by DKS Consultants. Ms. Sullivan provided a broad presentation. We actually have it available if you want to review any of it, but ultimately, the task at hand tonight is action on setting a goal for the plan. And during the discussion, during the council meeting, there was somewhat consensus on bringing forward a reduction of fatalities and injuries as the goal to 50% of the current rate in a certain timeline. During outreach events, which happened in the following nights and days, both online and in person, there were suggestions, and I believe one, one of the council members suggested a modification to that year. So, what you have in your pocket tonight is two alternatives for the goal setting. One is a reduction of 50% of fatal and serious injuries in crashes in city roadways by the year 2040. That is motion A. And motion B is very similarly, a 50% reduction of fatal and serious injuries in city roadways, but the difference is that it would be set for the year 2035. So, really, the only difference is the year in which we are aiming to achieve that 50% reduction. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Do we have any questions by council? We'll start off with Mayor Potem Grim.
Thank you, Director Sarah. Yes, I was the one raised that, because I'll be honest with you, I thought what was originally presented to us was, I just thought we could achieve better than that, and I appreciate Councilman Peralis really challenging us for more. And I thought this kind of met in the middle, and, and I did see that the outreach group, even at National Night Out and everything, doing their job, maps open, ready to answer questions and all that, and I appreciated that. The one question I do have about this is, wasn't the, just remind me from the prior presentation, the 2040 number was predicated on some funding or something? Would you remind me of that, please?
Yes, the 2040 year tied with our current transportation system master plan. So, it was in a way tied to our existing planning document and potential set of projects. With that said, we are underway with an updated transportation system master plan, which may disalign with the states, because those project, those plans are typically 20 years. So, understanding that there is some variability to, to that plan coming forward, we thought when we discussed it with our consultant, that it was a good idea to bring forward those alternatives.
Okay. Thank you so much for the reminder. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that. I'm not seeing any other lights. So, yeah, again, both options are very good, and I will say, hopefully, one of these days, we could have all stop signs with the flashing lights, because there's quite a lot in Pasco where you come up sometimes to the stop sign and you don't see it till the last second. So, but yeah, I'd love to see serious injuries reduced by 50% or 100%. But I will let Mayor Potem Grim decide on which one he would like to push forward first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve motion B, Resolution Number 4641, adopting a commitment goal to reduce fatal and serious injuries on city roads by 50% by 2035.
Okay.
All right. So, we got a motion by Mayor Potem Grim and a second by Councilman Peralis. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Again, this one passes unanimously. Appreciate that. We're gonna jump to number 12, which is unfinished business. I'm not seeing anything. Which should move us on to number 13, which is council appointment process for council position number four, voting district number four. And we are gonna have a report by Assistant City Manager, Angela Pashon.
Good evening, mayor and council. So, before you this evening, as a report regarding the appointment process for the council vacancy in district number four, the vacancy was created by the recent resignation of Councilmember Pete Serrano on August 10 of 2025. In accordance with Pasco municipal code and Washington state law, the responsibility of filling this position is now with you, and the qualifications to be appointed to fill the vacancy are the same as those required to be elected for the position. So, one is residency within Pasco and within district four, and then be a registered voter. As former council member, Serrano is the sole candidate on the ballot, and if elected, will need to resign again following the certification process. So, this initial process would be for filling his current vacancy until the end of this year. Staff is ready to publish the application and begin marketing. Um, staff is ready to publish the application and begin marketing the vacancy process, uh but staff is uh seeking some council direction on procedural elements, including how long you would like to hold the application process open for. Um, based on that, we can, uh, staff can provide, you know, some recommendations, but uh would like to know if you would like to hold the uh scheduled interviews during a council meeting, and if so, would you like to start early? Um, and then the timing of the appointment, would you expect the selected incumbent to begin the night of the interview or the following week? So, um, look forward to discussion.
Well, I have my druthers, but I'd love to hear from the, the dais. So let's start with the Councilman Harpster first.
Sir, can you repeat, the second thing you wanted to know was if they should start that night or the subsequent, subsequent meeting? What was the first point?
Um, so the first uh point is how long do you want to hold the applications open for? And then it was the date and time for public interviews. Um, so would you like to hold it during a regularly scheduled council meeting? Um, and if so, do you want to start early? Um, been through a couple of these, I think in the recent years, so um I think a couple on council might uh recognize that opportunity. Um, and then, yes, the timing of the appointment, when you would actually have them start.
Okay. Yep, my recommendation would be uh start the application, open the application uh now and do it for, you know, two weeks and at the next regular council meeting, two weeks from now, have the interviews at that meeting and that person start that evening. I believe that's what council did with Ms. Blaisdell about two years ago and um that seemed to work well. I think the uh, the sooner that we can get it done, which is that process is outlined, the sooner district four can have representation once again. Um, and I apologize if my mic wasn't on for any of that, but I think you all heard me because I saw heads nodding, so, thanks.
All right. And I know Councilman Peralis was second, so let's uh go with him.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, uh, do you have any historical, like, record of how long the application was previously open for the other appointments?
Typically, we, I believe we've held it open for 30 days.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then give uh staff a little bit of time and we need to make sure when they qualify, um, they live in the district, um, and then, um, do you all want to review the applications um to select top candidates or do you want to ask everyone to come in? So if you get 20 applicants, would you like to interview all 20 applicants?
Okay. Um, for the recruitment timeframe, I would say uh two weeks. Um, I say we review all the applicants and we narrow it down to three or what have you, and then we can interview them in open session like everyone else has, and then we can appoint them at a future meeting. They would start that night before, you know, we would swear them in.
Basically, that was my same talking point. Yeah, I was, I agree with Harpster, but however, I would extend two to three weeks just to make sure that we give enough people the opportunity, making sure that it, there's an intentional outreach to make sure everyone in district four knows that there's an opportunity. Um, and I do have a question. Um, this is to serve until December and not until the next general election?
Correct.
So I can add a few points of clarification. Um, so essentially this is a precarious or a, an unusual situation, I should say. So essentially what will happen is the, uh, there are two things going on. There is the end of Councilmember Serrano's uh previous term, which ends December 31st of this year. So that, that is essentially what you're hiring for, that, that, that position, and that position will expire then. It is not clear what would, what will actually take place. Well, we do know a couple of things. We do know um that, well, it depends on what happens with the election. We know that uh Councilmember Serrano is the only person who is going to be on the ballot. Uh, a write-in candidate uh could um, could prevail and, well, unusual, could prevail, and that person would then uh re- assume the seat on the, the first, after the first of the year, so they would go through the normal, the seating process. If Councilmember Serrano wins essentially in absentia, uh, and by, because he's still on the ballot, he will not uh take the oath and therefore by uh default, the seat will remain vacant as of January 1, 2026. At that point, the council would need to go through the process, the same process that is in your council rules, and you'll need to go through that process for another 30 days and decide if that person, uh, that, if you, who you select for that position. That position would then be held for another uh two years until uh 2027, and then that person uh could either decide to run or uh someone else could run. Uh, if they decide to run, uh, that person will hold the position for another two years and then the elect, the uh, the seat would come up again. So uh it is, it is a weird uh kind of uh series of of uh processes, but there would be two appointment processes, completely separate processes that wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to roll them into one because of the fill-in, uh, the, the writing candidate, which thanks to Strachey, uh, pointed that out to us, so, um, which was fascinating. So, yeah, it's kind of an interesting situation.
Mr. Ferguson, uh, question to follow. Um, does council have the opportunity to wait until elections?
That's a great question. So we looked at that, and yes, you do, yes and no. So uh, the state law says that you have 90 days uh from the date of vacancy to refill the position. If you don't fill the position, then the county commissioners fill the position for you. Uh, if the county commissioners don't fill it for, I think, another 120 days or if it is included, I'd have to refresh my recollection there, then essentially the, it goes to the governor and the governor fills the position. So none of that's going to happen because the, the, the clock is gonna run out, as much fun as that does sound, uh, the, uh, I'm kidding, but my point is, is that uh you, there, the clock is going to expire uh November, was it, uh, when did Mr. Serrano, last Monday? So 10th, but essentially November 10th. Uh, and uh the county commissioners would, uh, could potentially be able to appoint someone uh as a council member for you for the remaining meetings of the year. Not sure how many of those you're gonna have, but um, obviously that's something that would be um up to the council to decide whether they want to move forward with or not. But um, yeah, there's no, uh, there's no mandatory, it's not like you're gonna get fined if you don't appoint somebody, it just would go to the commissioners.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to Mayor Portemgrim.
Thank you, and I guess just one more follow-up on that. So in, because of the timelines given, I think I saw 180 days in there. Technically, if we didn't appoint and they didn't appoint, it would just be one appointment come January, correct? Because that would be within the, the scope of the time, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But you would not have any authority to prevent the commissioners from appointing somebody?
Of course. Just maybe the word please, but um, no, anyways, I would probably agree with what Councilman Harpster said about, um, you know, uh, two weeks and um, I, I think they should be seated immediately too. I think that's what, when I was in the audience, I think what I saw for Councilwoman Blaisdell is she was seated that night, and so I think that would really be the way to go. So yeah, I, you know, I think we need to get rolling on it sooner than later, as Councilman Harpster said, so district four can have representation up here at the dais and that's what I think.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, we got the Councilman Harpster again.
Yeah, I was just in response to Mr. Peralis's suggestion that we narrow it down to three or so out of however many applicants we get, I would uh support that as well, just so we're not spending hours here interviewing everybody. And then especially, uh, if we decided they're gonna take the seat that night, that's taken off a lot of people's time. Instead, we can just take up three and um, uh, I think that respects their time, allows us a chance to enter, to review applications ahead of time and, and be better prepared. So I'd be in favor of that.
Okay. And now we go into Councilman Peralis.
Oh, I'll be brief, Mayor. Yeah, I was just gonna um also say, yeah, I'd, I'd be okay with like starting early and we can do the interviews like before the actual meeting, and then if we appoint them, then we can kind of start fresh, point them and then go from there. Yeah, I'm looking at the, the timeline. I think two weeks would be sufficient if we start advertising tomorrow, then Labor Day, we won't, we won't be there that Monday, right? We'll be, council will be the next Tuesday, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, that'd be two weeks and I think that's more than enough, enough time. There's no reason to really wait on this and so, I, you know, I, I think that we already, we're talking about this last week, to an extent, just combine, let's go ahead, we know uh, we know this, um, this whole song and dance. I mean, we've had a couple of appointments in the past couple of years, so it's not that difficult to understand.
I think uh, we're all on the same page and I agree with my other uh council members. So if you kind of maybe give like a quick rundown, so if we did like two weeks from today, then would we like have to have a special meeting where we actually went over the applications or would it just be like the Mayor Portem or myself come in or would we need like a group to actually go over that and then give them time to come in to interview or?
I believe how it's been done before is uh through an executive session.
Okay.
And so reviewing candidates um that way. Um, if you do the two weeks, um, with the second being where they're, they're due, um, could, you would need to wait until the following meeting basically to have your executive session. We want to at least run through and make sure that those applicants are eligible for you all.
Okay.
Um, and so we would be looking probably at the eighth for you all to review those applications, um, and then the 15th to have interviews come in.
Okay. All right. I think we're all in agreement. I don't know if uh Councilman Harpster has something else to say.
Hey, I just have one more question, I remembered. Sorry. The questions that will eventually be asked of the applicants by council in open session, those, I remember a couple of years ago, I think those are written by staff or by legal in, referring my question, that we can't just ask random questions like, you know, what do you think about PBS losing funding or?
We prefer not, but I would say, um, usually there is a standard list, um, and each uh council member has a specific question so that all candidates are being asked the same.
And those questions are?
Uh, generally, um, I believe they are provided by staff, um, but with legal support as well.
Sure. Okay. Thanks.
And if I can just add real quick to what you just said, Angela, generally questions are provided by staff, approved or run over with, by Mr. Ferguson, but if you have a question in particular and just to make sure that you continue to ask that question to all the candidates, I would suggest submitting it. That way it's, it's in writing.
All right. Well, Mr. Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, I want, I want to make sure because we've had some changes in the law recently, uh, down the wall of wall with regard to executive sessions and, and uh voting and those types of things. So uh, we will, we will nail down the, we understand that, what the, what the preference is, but we'll do our best to understand whether that is something that can actually take place in terms of winnowing down any potential applicants. It may be a decision of you take applications, you, you look at applications uh and discuss those in executive session and then come out and make, uh, make a vote, somebody makes a vote, or you come out and you interview all the, uh, the candidates. So it may be one or the other, so I'm not sure we can uh go into executive session, uh narrow that down in executive session because those are, that would be looked at, I think, as a final decision in the executive session. So we'll have to figure out what the dance needs to be, but uh, there has been a little change there, so we'll, we'll figure it out though.
Okay. Well, sounds good. That's why you get the big bucks, so, all right. Uh, I guess we have.
I will be real quick. I mean, I mean, we haven't really, I mean, we've done this quite frequently, so what was last, what was the process last time? Did we come out, did the council come out and nominate three people? Nope. Everybody got interviewed. Oh, everyone? Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't think that's ever been, okay, that's on my way up.
All right. Not everyone. Um, with that, well, let's go on to number 14. We got miscellaneous discussion. Do we have anything from our city ma- or?
Well, they go first.
Yeah, city manager or staff?
Good evening, mayor, council. Obviously today being the first day on the job, I don't have a whole lot to report to you this evening, other than it's been a great first day. Um, I enjoyed attending the ribbon cutting at uh Sage View today and, and seeing the great turnout there and uh getting to, to know staff and um, just kind of getting set up with computer and technology and all those kinds of things. So I promise a more comprehensive update at the next council meeting, but it's great to be here. I'm excited. Um, I've been impressed with the council, the staff and the citizens that I've met, whether through the interview process or house hunting or even just here on the first day, and so I'm very optimistic about the future and I look forward to working beside all of you. And uh, would invite any of the citizens that uh have an open door policy and uh would love to meet with any citizens that just want to know their government better and um, the role of city manager and those kinds of things and también hablo español, entonces les invito a visitar conmigo. So, thank you.
All right. So thank you for that, city manager Stewart. Um, looks like that's all we have as far as, your light's still on, so I assume you're there. Okay. Um, Councilman Rahas.
Thank you. Um, I basically, as we were talking, we checked off several things on my list, uh, but two reminders, Orion Ribbon Cutting is happening tomorrow, 1901 East Salt Lake, and completely removing my hat off of the city council person, you're gonna encounter a lot of uh social groups, Kiwanis and Rotary are out there selling duck race tickets. Please remember to buy a ticket. A lot of the proceeds or majority of the proceeds go to non, um, nonprofits that help the community, so you're investing back into the community. By the way, I am selling tickets, so you can find me at Yoke's one of these days. Um, but thank you, just wanted to share that.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm selling duck tickets as well. All right, if I don't sell them, I have to buy all of them myself, so that part's kind of bad, but uh, anyway, I appreciate you, that little plug. Um, got Councilman Harpster.
I did already buy my duck race tickets from Councilmember Rahas, so. Um, I don't know how that bodes for me now that we have a new mayor. Um, I did just want to welcome Mr. Stewart and um, uh, was uh thrilled to learn that he was gonna be starting early and so we go straight from one interim into now having a permanent city manager instead of two interims and um, just uh really looking forward to the future, glad to have you here. And um, we got one heavy lift out of the way, now another, and then, you know, another coming end of year, so it just keeps coming, but uh, we can do it. Excellent.
Well, thank you for that, Councilman Harpster. And uh, yeah, so I did want to say a few words for our former city manager and interim, Dave Zabel. He's in the back. Uh, he's again, an amazing individual, a guy that uh you could always count on. Um, I'm gonna be sad to see him go. It was a, kind of like going back to high school in a way, you meet somebody and then you go back and there he is again, so. Uh, it was a, quite the surprise to see you again, but I really appreciate your leadership. I appreciate everything you've done for us and uh can't say enough about uh what a good friend you are and your work ethic and how you handle yourself is very, very awe inspired, put it that way, uh, to put it mildly. So again, thank you for everything you've done. Um, I don't know if anybody else would like to go with uh Councilman Rahas, since she's[1761.11]